An addition to that. It's not clear to me that it did not take me. Within a buffer zone of the wetland to the north of my property. Uh, it was never a consideration, never a thought at the time. Uh, I got the permit to do the extension, so it 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 appears to me. That the edge of my garage is approximately fifty feet. From where the water level is in the constructed wetland. So the constructed wetland runs most of the distance of the north side of my property. Okay, so there's the.
Ray, just to clarify, are you, do you, by constructed wetland, do you mean like a stormwater feature that was built to?
It's, I live in the uh Pinnacle homeowner association area and the uh. Uh, there were wetlands constructed to take care of runoff from the roads and to have the settle sediments. Settle out before the clearer water was filtered and went on down the brook.
Okay, and I I just ask because I think that those are regulated in a different way than the wetlands, like a class two wetland, which would be a natural wetland. I just wanted to make sure we were um talking about the same type of wetland, just to clarify.
You make a good point, and that was a question in my mind. Uh, uh, and I don't know what the difference is between a constructed wetland. In a wetland, if there was a wetland there before it was ever constructed. Because there's a dip there and it's it's a wet, it's a drainage area. So there may have been a wetland there initially, but setting that aside, that still matter. Uh, the second point is, is that in digging the foundation for this extension. The sand was sand, sandy clay loam, I don't know what it is, but it's tough. Was dumped and what was essentially originally. A fifteen degree slope, approximately a fifteen degree slope, the whole north side of my property, east to west. There's this area that now is about a twenty-five percent grade. And I've been trying to plant things on it to make it look more more natural, but the dimensions of this. Are about. Uh, forty feet. By twenty feet, I'd say. Yeah, this is definitely a constructed slope, it's not a natural slope. Uh, and what this raises in my mind, a question about when we talk about constructed slopes. Are we also going to consider how large they are? For example, when you take a look at a classy wetland, if it's less than five thousand. Square feet or less than five thousand square feet, the city doesn't pay any attention to it, you don't have jurisdiction over it. Uh, wa- is there a same kind of consideration on man constructed slopes? Does the size of the slope matter before it falls under a don't touch it consideration?
So Ray, in this draft amendment, if it is demonstrated to be constructed. By 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 human made and shown on a site plan, it would be exempted period regardless of size.
So it would be exempted from development?
No, it would be exempted from being regulated as a steep slope, it would not be considered to be a steep slope. If it is demonstrated that was human created.
So that that could, that leads to a a second consideration, uh, I have no intention of doing this, but it. It it, I'm sure other people might on their own properties in a similar situation. That steep slope I told you about. Is uh, supposing I wanted to build a patio on the flat above the top of the steep slope. And then extend that patio out as an elevated platform with support poles down. Into the lower part of the steep slope. To have a a basically above ground patio. Would that be considered development? I I'm just laying this on the table, I I don't intend to do it, but I'm giving you something to think about when you. Think about regulating these, and I'm not even sure if that is something that would.
In the instance, Ray, of it being a constructed one, as you described, then it would not be subject to the regulations, so it would be allowed. In the instance of, let's say it was a natural one, uh, I think um, if the commission would like. Um, we have taken a whole bunch of notes on how we have looked at various circumstances that have arisen, I don't recall off the top of my head whether we have. Considered a single pillar to be development or not, um, you know, there's, there's. Dozens of questions a week that come along lines like this of all sorts of minor interpretations of regulations, and I just don't recall.
Oh, I think, I think that'd be great if you could come back to us with that next week, because I think that also kind of overlaps with some of what Donna was asking about, like, you know. There might be appropriate ways to use a sloped areas. Um, anything else, Ray? Very good, thanks so much, Noah Hyman, do you want to go ahead?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, this is Representative Hyman. Thank you for um, this. I do have several questions, and if if possible, we could take them one at a time. I would appreciate it just for my own note taking and my own concerns, is that is that something we can do?
Sure.
Yeah, the first question is, um, why is this change being seek? I mean, did something happen in particular, who? Actually asked for this, this meeting to even occur, considering all the work that's happened in South Burlington over the last several years.
Um, well, so we addressed that a little bit at the beginning of the meeting, um.
Not able to be there, yeah.
Yeah, so my notes say there were about twelve, right around a dozen property owners over the last year who have come in with. Small things they're trying to do, like a fence or a deck extension on a small. Residential property, um, and with our new regulations. Um, they would have to pay for a very expensive multi-thousand dollar wetland delineation to be done. In order to use kind of what's existing on their lot, their backyard, so. You know, I think the idea was that. You know, these larger buffers were were pretty onerous for a. Um, like a small residential lot that was already.
Just for my own. Though, don't we have maps?
Uh, there are maps, um. Ho- however. Um, the process is that if you. There are maps of varying ages, state wetland maps are only valid for five years, so they're not considered valid. Uh, at the state level, if they're more than five years old, if uh. For the D, the rules for the DRB, if somebody wants to. Be granted an exception to a wetland, they need to do a field delineation to prove exactly the wet, where the wetland is, so therefore. This is how we got to this path of, if it appears that there's a wetland buffer, then. Uh, that the, that the applicant wants to either disprove that is not there, or. That they want to ask a request, uh, an exception from the DRB, in both cases, there needs to be a field delineation. Which becomes a multi-thousand, several month process.
If the map shows that they'd encroach, then the way they could rebut that is through delineation.
Correct, right, yeah.
Okay, next question?
Yeah, sure, my next question is, if it's only about a dozen, which which I just heard. Owners, rather than changing the LDRs, wouldn't it just be better or easier or cheaper than go to go case by case? For who's got a steep, steep slope, who gets a fence, who's close, rather than uh risking weakening our environmental. Aggressiveness and our protection of our property and protection of the land of South Burlington for everybody.
Uh, so what I can say from the staff and Noah was that. In the first summer, we received twelve requests that brought this forward. Our estimate, um, very roughly that I described to Roseanne and and uh. Sarah is, there's probably closer to fifty to seventy-five or more properties that this falls into, and it's. Really impossible to know the actual number because the wetland data that exists is. It's not really a mapped thing, and so just eyeballing it, that's what I can see quickly, but it might be more than that.
I I get that, and that that, you know, that is substantial, and I'm just wondering if risking weakening our um environmental regulations. I think, which is falls under, is worth the. Maybe ten people want a fence per year, uh, which we can deal with case by case, without wholesale changing. All of the regulations in all South Burlington. Just my own question, um, I can't answer that, obviously, and I don't. Expect an answer from from um, this fantastic panel, and I appreciate all you've done, um. Uh, I just think it goes into the work that. The. All the different committees, all of the groups did during IZ to come up with this, these fantastic regulations. Um, to preserve. South Burlington and protect South Burlington and all of our environment and all of our wetlands and all of our natural resources for. You know, thirty fences or eight pools, I just think maybe we should be thinking about it more in the lens of protecting. What's really important to us and and not, eh, look, I have a pool, I get it, you know, I wanted a pool, I got a pool, yeah, but. Um, I think more in a case by case, those things could be taken care of, rather than changing. All of the um interim zoning work that was done by several communities and. Dozens of people, and that's just my opinion, okay, so the next thing that I I would like to point out is that, you know, they. The benefit to our role by having these wetlands. Right, so there's a reason why they were. Increased from fifty to hundred, right, and 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 like, that's not like, I I don't think come out in this conversation, is that. There's a reason why we went from fifty to hundred, because it's very important. It's important for Vermont, it's important for South Burlington, it's important for our economy, it's important for. I mean, right now, what we're going through with the Inflation Reduction Act, the more we can preserve, the more money Vermont's gonna get. To do other great things, like, like this change. I mean, even though it feels like, you know, uh, parochial to South Burlington. South Burlington is the the second largest city in the state, you know, what we do here impacts everywhere. And I just think that's really worth noting, and. Um, the benefit to what I think is lost in this meeting so far, and I I I just want to be the voice of is, um. Again, uh, repairing areas, connectivity. All the beautiful things that I see here on my property in the Great Swamp. Uh, the, all those things become in jeopardy and. I don't think a wholesale change of our. LDRs for twelve or fifteen fences a year. Is worth the sacrifice, I mean, it it and that that's just what I'm hearing from you. If it's seventy fences or or forty fences and eighteen pools over eighteen years. I mean, if there was hard numbers and you were telling me that people were. Suffering to get the change, but, you know, but all the work we've done, I I'm not hearing any of that impact or importance. We're hearing a couple of people are having trouble with a fence or a pool and. Really, I mean, I know we don't have um Dahlia, and I know we we've lost staff, and I know it creates a a a. An impact on on the great stuff that we have in South Burlington, but I think the importance of protecting South Burlington. For South Burlington, I I think that should be always the primary goal, that should be our guiding light, that our north star. You know, that should be on the whiteboard in every meeting, and I think that, um, this. Has lost sight of the fact that the most important thing is, um, us.
Thank you, Noah, very much, um, Sarah, did you want to follow up on that?
Well, yeah, I mean, I I haven't heard this evening that we're abandoning the new notion of a hundred foot buffer. That that is there, i- in my understanding, but there's an an acknowledgement that there are some pre. Developed properties from prior to this time. That were very close to the line, they, it, the rules said fifty feet and the boundaries at fifty feet. And those have to be acknowledged because they're pre-existing, am I misunderstanding? I didn't think we.
You're, you're, you are um, correct with the intent, Sarah, I think Noah came in um, kind of late in the meeting and. That explanation, um, that it's, you know, we're trying to be really narrow here, um. To kind of reduce the burden to someone who has an existing lawn that was created under that kind of fifty foot rule. Yeah, so Sarah, you are correct.
I I think he can be reassured that we're not abandoning the the notion of the hundred foot buffer.
Yeah. Um, anyone, anyone else, um, Francis, Francis McDonald, do you want to go ahead?
Yes, thank you, um, I I, my concern is that. We established the hundred foot buffer through a lot of discussion. Uh, during interim zoning, and I think the hundred foot buffer has improved. Uh, our our regulations. Um, I think reverting to a lot line, when we're not exactly sure that these lot lines are more than fifty feet. Um. Has, is a special instance that could, in some cases, reduce the buffer to less than fifty feet. And I would rather see uh, just a phrase added to your proposal. That says. But not less than a fifty foot buffer to a class two wetland. So if we added just a phrase to say that the buffer, even though it's the lot line. Could not be less than fifty feet, I think we would uh. Achieve your objective without losing uh, or allowing, um. Something, you know, closer to the established wetland. Oh, that's.
Very good, any, any other questions? Or comments? Um, as we stated earlier, um, we will be continuing our public hearing um, into our next meeting, so we won't be closing it tonight. Any, anything else from the public before, I think we might have a little discussion up here between the commissioners.
I do have one.
Oh.
Quick comment, yeah, I'm sorry.
Noah, and then Roseanne?
Yeah, just figuring my keyboard here, um. I. Am aware of everything that took place earlier, I just want to emphasize the work that was done during IZ and the value of it. And I just don't want that to get lost in the minutia of. Twenty-four fences or pools in South Burlington, the, you know, the importance of all the work that was done and why it was done. I think should be germane and should be kept in the forefront of our thoughts, and that's all I was.
Thank you, Roseanne?
I I guess I sort of want to say the same thing, and that's what I was trying to allude to in my comment. Uh, earlier and probably didn't say it as well as as Noah, and that is, it it was. It took you a long time to get to a hundred feet, um, as a buffer, and I think that is what um, you need, we needed to do. Um. I I I I was trying to get to the point to, the understanding is, it. Uh, whether or not we can be sure that there's at least a fifty foot buffer between the wet class two wetlands. I'm I'm not really confident that we can be sure about that, but it it really, um. I- it it forgets the whole hundred foot buffer, that is what we need, we need more than a hundred foot to be, to be honest, and. I, it's horrible that it's gonna cost people more money, and that it's gonna cost staff more time to do it, but I think it's worth it. Um, um, it's gonna be a short term cost and short term. Uh, work for long term benefits in preserving uh, as much buffer as we can, um, in between. Where we put concrete and buildings and where we have our wetlands and our repairing areas, so I'm, um. I want to make it clear to, uh, in my public comments that I do support keeping the hundred foot buffer everywhere, um. So I don't think I was clear about that at the beginning, so, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, um, any, any commissioners have comments or questions, Andrew, I think you.
So maybe on on two fronts, I mean, ju- just for the public, I guess we did have a discussion about. Fifty versus a hundred, I'm not sure if it was last time we met, maybe the time before, and I guess my own perspective. Would have been to make this a narrower provision, right, because as written, it allows. Someone to expand the foundation, to pave a patio, to build a tennis court, to build a pool. I I probably would have made it narrower to exempt a fence or a raised patio or something that has a similar, less impactful use. Um, from the hundred foot buffer, rather than allow basically homeowners to do anything on that, you know, fifty to one hundred foot. Margin, so that that would have been my personal preference, but I understand, you know, maybe others have a different view of that, um. Then on the, on what we're looking at in particular, I I think Francis really said it well, I mean, I understand that we'd expect. All lots prior to November tenth, twenty-one to have a buffer, but what this does is eliminates a requirement, which doesn't really make sense to me. To eliminate a requirement that's been in place for many decades, right, as Ray, and you'd have. Basically, a requirement of zero through November tenth, twenty-one, and the requirement to a hundred. For lots after that, which doesn't really make sense, I think at a minimum, it should say. At the end of it, you know, but in no event shall the buffer be less than fifty feet, so that we don't change what the requirement was.
So just as a quick point of clarification, that was the language that was presented to the commission at the last meeting, um, staff took. Commission direction to change it to the lot line language.
But what this does is, right, preserves the buffer between fifty and a hundred outside the lot line, but it went further. And eliminated the buffer for lot lines and encroach on the fifty, I don't remember a discussion about that latter point, at least if it was, I I missed it.
The discussion at the previous commission meeting was to, instead of the original language as drafted by staff for the previous meeting was to just. To simply revert to the fifty feet buffer, which was, had been in place for, for, as we've stated for decades. Um, there was discussion by um, Mr. Metag to change that to say lot line.
Michael did not understand that that would eliminate the fifty foot requirement. And if he were here tonight, he would say that was not his understanding, and he thinks it should say, you know, about less than fifty feet, I'm certain of that.
Well, I I mean, if if that's the commissioner's, commission's pleasure, we're certainly, I don't think it was ever our. From the staff's perspective, it was our intent to deliver something that would retain a minimum of fifty feet.
Yeah.
So if that's what you would, if you're finding that the la- that the language as drafted isn't achieving that, tell us to put the fifty feet, we're happy to do it.
And this is a very, very quick and fairly, fairly insignificant clarification, um, many residential fences are exempt from. Article twelve review, under a different section that was included, but just when everyone's been using fence as an example, fence is not. Pool, deck, shed, those are better examples.
Okay, um. Yeah, and I I don't know that we even need to make a decision tonight about changing language, but I think that maybe it makes sense that we. Kind of revisit lot line versus fifty feet, um, before we send it on.
And I have, I I'm just, my perspective, I have no issue with including, um. The fifty feet language, if that's what the commission wants to do, we were just attempting to. Um, listen to what the commission had said at the previous meeting and also keep the regulations as, um. Concise as we could while still being effective.
Again, I I mean, I think, putting aside the the substance for the the first point I made, if if we all think that nonetheless fifty feet for these lots makes sense, I I would. Retain what you have, but just say, but in no event shall the buffer be less than fifty feet.
Yeah, and I I think, um, you know, when Michael brought it up, and then. You know, knowing so many of these lots were just kind of drawn that way, um, it it just meant that, um. You know, it's a line that exists versus the delineation line which does not exist, so I think it kind of, um, you know, if we felt comfortable that. All or the majority of these half acre lots, um. Were drawn properly in the first place, if we're comfortable with that, then, then, you know, it's a lot less work for everyone to just say, okay, there's this line.
But honestly, they were drawing in, if we have a whole bunch of lots that are only twenty or thirty feet. Even more so why we shouldn't be changing the requirement, right, so someone, because they. Got away with something in the past, now she'll be able to build a patio twenty feet from a wetlet, like, that doesn't feel right to me.
Hmm, I mean, I don't know if this happens, but wetlands can change. You know, and do they sometimes expand, the water table goes up, does, does that ever happen? That over time that you might have a wetland encroach closer to the lot line than it was originally?
The map would have been drafted a while ago.
It it could happen. Especially because um, part of the delineation of wetland includes an evaluation of. The existing vegetation in the moment, um, you know, there could be. Situations where maybe something had been like a moat field or something in the vegetation in the past, when the original delineation was done was, um. Very altered, and now because twenty, thirty, forty years later, now we have allowed that buffer to naturalize, like. You know, maybe there is a uh, potential for.
Right, I guess what I would say from the staff and, and and all that is correct. What I would say from the staff end is that, uh. If there is a strong staff. Uh, understanding or evidence or, uh, uh. Sense that the wetland has moved, we may look into it, but in most cases. As a practical matter of implementation, if it's a neighborhood where. The wetland was drawn at fifty feet and there's very clearly on, you know, the aerial photographs, what looks like aerial. Uh, what looks like wetland, and then you get to the property line and its lawn, we're not anticipating. Going and doing a delineation on each one, or or even a an attempted delineation on each one of those, because that brings us right back into the. Now you have to prove us that you're not a wetland, and I think the, our our intent is, if it, you know, often these neighborhoods have. Very clearly on the Google images, a uh, a a wet area. That was approved as being, including the fifty foot buffer, then you get to the lot line and it's a lawn. And it would be to say, if it's a lawn, that's unless we have strong evidence to the contrary, that's outside of the fifty feet.
Um, anything, anyone want staff to look into before we continue our hearing and discussion next meeting?
One thing we would like, um, and you don't have to discuss it tonight, you can think about it a little bit, uh, as Kelsey pointed out, on the steep slopes issue. One of the items that was proposed was that, uh, if there happens to be a steep slope that is. Very, very small and insignificant, i.e. de minimis, that the board, that the DRB would be empowered to. Make that call. Staff in reviewing this was split on that subject as to whether that's something that. Uh, should be given to the board as a practicality, or whether, you know, if there may be, maybe the, if there's a. Section of steep slope in there of whatever size, even if it's small, maybe there's a reason that it should be that, that that it's there from a geological perspective. So, um, we wanted to be transparent that we've debated, and what we concluded was, we would bring it to you.
So just, I'd suggest the administrator, which would be the you, right, director at the time. Um, has more of a pulse of what the sentiment is of the planning commission. Um, that I'm not quite sure the DRB would have that, so that'd be my, my recommendation.
Let's, let's, can we.
Commission discussion right now, we stopped doing public comment.
I'm sorry, public comments.
I'm sorry, public comment's over.
We're gonna finish the commission discussion first, Noah.
Okay.
Then get back to you.
Okay.
I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm personally okay with having the DRB have discretion to exempt, you know, really small stuff, that seems like, you know, they should have the power to do that.
Yeah, there was, there was one specific entrance, instance that came up that I kind of disagreed with the way staff looked at it on one property, because there was a ledge, an exposed ledge that had a lot of vegetation on it. And it was, I think it would have been described as a steep slope. And yet, that may have happened prior to the regulations being redrafted, but the, the plan for the property basically would have flattened that area. And I, I don't know, I, I kind of disagreed with it, because I thought it was a strong feature of the site and a natural delineation of the site. And that wasn't disallowed by staff. And I, I thought it was a strong point, you know, that, you know, otherwise I wouldn't have even gotten involved in it. I got involved in it because there happened to be some very large trees. What?
And just, just to be clear, we have not yet had an application that has applied the steep slope. So anything that, that somebody may have participated in the, in the past has, was under prior rules where there was no steep slope standard. So we have not yet, the board has not yet encountered one where that's been a proposal to, to impact the steep slope in any way, shape or form.
Yeah, because it would be interesting to, to see, you know, in, in action, in action, you know, what, how that would be interpreted and what, what would cause that to be looked at as steep slope. I mean, it seems obvious, but the area in question is kind of an obvious, it's an obvious question to me, it's like, how big of an area does this have to be before it's, but if we're, it becomes a concern?
Anything else on that? We're fine with how it's written? Okay, Noah, did you still have something you wanted to say? Or anyone else?
Well, yep, I'm trying to do my zoom here. I just hope that the lens of climate change and what's happening to our world would stay in the front of your minds. It is, it is the defining moment of the next hundred years and I, I feel, you know, for people that may want a fence, it may not get approved, but that happens all the time. I know so many people, my next door neighbor wanted to put an addition on for a bathroom. He got denied here in forty five acres in South Burlington.
Do you have a different comment? Because we've, we've actually.
No, you're right. I'm sorry. Thank you so much. You're correct.
Thank you very much. So I guess Paul, I need to make a motion to continue our hearing.
Yes.
Next meeting, do we need a specific time and date?
Seven o'clock on Tuesday, January twenty fourth.
Okay, I move to continue our public hearing until seven PM Tuesday, January twenty fourth. I think Paul won the second, all in any discussion? Any, all in favor?
All right.
Hi? Ted, are you, anyone opposed? Did you vote yes? Okay, okay, unanimous, very good. So we have continued our public hearing until the twenty fourth. And I think we had decided we were going to also kind of skip and postpone item six, which is more discussion on this item until that time. So we can move into the comprehensive plan, schedule, outreach and input.
Yeah, so I've included a lot of the information in the packet. Just as a quick reminder, the comprehensive plan needs to be adopted by February of twenty twenty four. Effectively, that, that would make it fall during budget season for city council. So our goal is to actually get it approved by city council by approximately Thanksgiving of twenty twenty three, so that it's not falling in sort of December and January. Pushing the dates back, counting backwards through all of that, the required public hearings with city council and then required public hearings with, with you. That working backwards mean that we need a fairly finalized draft of the comprehensive plan by August of twenty twenty three. The intention being that over the summer in June, July and August, there would be planning commission review of a full draft, with my, my goal being compiling a full draft for you by mid-June. Additional meetings open for public comment over the summer to be finalizing a lot of the policies and objectives and language that are in the comp plan for that. Working backward again, sections would be reviewed by the planning commission and by the relevant committees and departments in March, April and May, which actually puts our public outreach in February and March. It is January tenth, so we are right in it, trying to, we've, we've now scheduled all of our public outreach meetings. We are working on advertising them. We're working with the school district, with our local media outlets, with the library, with other channels that we, that we have to advertise these, these kinds of things. And I have outlined how we structured them in, in the, in the memo provided. I tried to set out all the information that I have and all the dates that I have. Generally, the topic area meetings, the subjects are scheduled during a normally scheduled policy committee meeting, so those are on different days of the week. There are also four geographic, geographically based meetings that are all scheduled on Thursdays. Everything would be at seven o'clock. Most everything, if not everything, is, would be scheduled for room three oh one upstairs with the intention that, as we've seen, many public commenters participate virtually. So I guess at this point, I included a lot in the packet, there was a lot of dates, a lot of information. I was wanting to know if anyone had any questions about anything, any confusion, any, anything you wanted to, to ask me at this point. Yeah.
Are, are you going to post like questions or anything, you know, to prime people? You know, if they're coming into the meeting, it, it often helps if they have something to respond to. If you just say, oh, we're changing the comprehensive plan, that doesn't really mean anything to most people.
So there's, there's sort of two stages of, of public input in this case. We intentionally are leaving the initial public outreach fairly open ended. We, we are hiring a professional facilitator who we will be working with to be writing the questions and we also be working with our policy committees. I've already gotten a lot of feedback from our staff departments and from some policy committees about what topics they would want to be raised, what questions they want to be asked. But our, our intention is that these public meetings are much, are, are very open ended. Anyone can come in and say anything that they want to bring up either in a topic meeting about the economy or about housing or about transportation or whatever the topic is for that meeting. Or they can attend any of the meetings that are geographically based. So if they live on the Shelburne Road corridor, they might want to attend the Southwest meeting and bring up that they have concerns about pedestrian access or whatever it might be. So we are, we've divided the meetings so that they're either topic or geographically narrowed a little bit. And then during the meetings, we have, we'll have a professional facilitator who will, who will be promoting more discussion and trying to get both more people to comment and make sure everybody is heard who is there and trying to, the word is escaping me, but trying to get, trying to get the discussion, trying to keep it moving and trying to get people to respond to different types of questions. So long answer of saying, no, we're not intending to be publishing specific questions ahead of time or, you know, draft sections or language or anything like that for these initial really open ended meetings, because we're hoping to get kind of what, what people are concerned about and what they're thinking about that we haven't thought of already. So the second part of your question is, that's part of why we are doing this, so that we have a good amount of time over the summer, is that the planning commission meetings, basically from February through to August, will be primarily, if not exclusively focused on comp plan questions. The agendas for those, for all of those meetings will make clear that public comment is some, if people can make comment on specific draft sections or on the full draft. So if, when we're looking for people to be commenting on specific language, those are meetings that will be happening later at the planning commission as opposed to in these public listening sessions.
Yeah, if, when you, when you.
One thing to add to it just super quickly, at the beginning of each of the public input sessions and in our outreach, it's also our intent to provide a very brief overview of the overarching vision and goals that you have concurred to and the sort of knowns that we're walking into with this, so that there's a framework, that it's not just, we could be any community that's ever existed and we're going to pretend that we're a blank slate. It's, here's the broad vision that exists for the city that we are, that we want to be refining with input. So, so it's not, it will help, we, we think, to focus the conversation.
Right, that's what I was.
But not lead people to an answer.
That's kind of what I was getting at, you know, how do you, how do you get kind of illicit suggestions that at least are useful?
Right, and that's, that's, that's our proposal for, that's how, that's our plan for how to do that.
And then coordination of, you know, because if you have regional meetings, but they refer to, say, transportation and things like that, is somebody going to cross reference those?
Me.
Oh, what a task.
I mean, if, 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 so I, I don't think it would be that someone who makes a come, if you make a come to the transportation meeting and you make a comment that you're concerned about the ability to commute by bike to work. I'm not going to be saying, okay, that person's address is this address and they live, they live in this section. I'm not going to be doing that kind of cross referencing. But part of the intention of having kind of multiple meetings and having both kinds of meetings is that there could be people who can attend one, but not the other, who's, who want to make a comment about the environment or energy or something that couldn't make that other meeting and they go to their geo, their geographically based meeting, they can still make those comments. And so a big part of my job in the next six months or so is going to be taking all of the public comment, taking all of the, the committee's comment, the staff department's comments, the planning commission's feedback and working it all out into a fairly holistic cohesive policy statement. So, again, long answer, but the short answer is me.
I think I just wanna, so I know you used the word, words professional facilitator. I guess I'm wondering if you know who or what group of whom.
Yep, it's the one who.
And how that fits into what you just said, which is it sounds like you're doing most of it. So like, how?
Yeah, so.
Is that facilitator going to be like helping you with some of that at least?
So the facilitator, his name is Joe Segali. And he will be, yeah, he will be primarily facilitating the meetings. So he, we will be doing some preparation work with him, both as staff and bringing in some of the policy committee chairs and staff liaisons to work with him to set up for successful meetings. He will not be doing like a summary or something after the fact. So, you know, analyzing the responses that, that all falls to, to me.
Well, he'll be great. And I guess my question to follow up to that is like, how, and you might be getting into this here in a second, is like, how do we, or, or does that person get people there? Is that, is that staff, is that like us trying to do things, is that the facilitator?
So it won't be the facilitator, that will be up to us. Our intention is as soon as this week to be starting to advertise in the other paper, in the city news, in other, you know, front porch forum, things like that. We are, I am also part of the reason that I've been working with the, the policy committees as early in this process as we, we could and with the staff departments, is there's going to be a significant ask of word of mouth publication, publicization? Where, you know, you all live in the community, you have friends and family in the community, you are involved in other community groups and community activities or religious communities or whatever it may be. And so we're relying on both our sort of traditional means of outreach, but also word of mouth from work from, from all of you and all of the members of our committees, which when you add it up, there is, there is a significant number of South Burlington residents that are involved in one or more of our, of our policy committees. I mean, I would, I would probably estimate, you know, seventy or so people are in, are in, are on these committees. So, and, and many are, you know, different age groups, live in different neighborhoods. Like clearly, we don't have representation of, of all communities that are in our, our city. But having that resource, I think, is pretty significant. I would, just, just to keep talking about it, I guess I'm also working on, working with the library to publicize through, through their channels, working with the school district to publicize through their communication channels with families. The intention is to do some outreach to, to the religious communities to hopefully publicize through their channels and, and getting, getting to as many people as we can through sort of as many methods as we can.
And I guess the one other follow up to that is, I know we've talked a little bit about us participating in the other paper, Clean and Green article. And our, our first slot is in May for that. And I know we already have a kind of more energy related article ready that Andrew's prepared. So that wouldn't, I guess I was originally thinking that maybe like that article slot might help with some of this outreach, but it's feeling like our schedule is kind of very different from that particular article schedule. And maybe we need to be doing more broad outreach about the meetings and things.
Well, we'll do some advertising, but in addition, I think you've raised a good idea that maybe we can, I think it would be a great idea to do a press release that we're starting this big outreach and we can invite the other paper to do, to, to write a story about it. It's obviously their editorial choice to do it. But in some ways, it's better if it's, if, if they choose to write it and we can invite them to suggest why that might be a good story for them.
Okay, that sounds like a great idea.
And if not, you know, we can also say we have a proposal for something we'd like to write, if you'd like, if, if you're interested and staff would happily do that, so.
Related, sort of relatedly, and it was a note that I included, it would be fantastic, both as, because this document eventually comes back to you to have one or more members of the planning commission attend each of these topic and geographic outreach meetings. It both provides a direct conduit between, between those meetings and the planning commission and also sort of indicates back to the public and to the members of those committees that the, the planning commission is, is involved and interested at this early, you know, fairly, really reasonably early stage. So I included this, the topic schedule, the topic and neighborhood based schedule here and what committee is hosting it. So if you could, you think about which one you'd be available to attend, which ones you would like to attend. And I would actually also encourage you to maybe go, if, if it's possible in your schedule to go outside of your normal comfort zone. Like if you're a person who is, you know, very into housing, you know, go, maybe go to the environment one. Or if you're very, you're very tuned in to the environment and energy and climate, maybe go to the, the Northwest or the Kennedy Drive geographic meetings. Like maybe instead of just, instead of going, you can always go to the ones that you're, you're interested in, but maybe push yourself to go to, to a slightly different one than you might normally. Just a suggestion.
Andrew?
So I was actually going to ask, so what, and what do you anticipate our role there would be? Is it to listen, to help facilitate?
Listen.
Just to listen, okay? And then I, I guess there are eleven of these.
Yes.
Would it make sense then to like ensure, you know, just for each of us to choose too, right?
Could we maybe do a sort of a doodle poll? And, or there's something like Doodle where you sign up. It's like, it's like a, I sign up for.
Yeah.
And invite, you know, if folks can pick maybe two, and then beyond that, if you're welcome to go to all eleven.
Right.
But, you know, maybe invite that maybe each commissioner tries to go to, is, is assigned to two, if, if you're possibly able to, we'd, we'd love that.
Yeah.
Makes sense to me.
Yeah.
And then the last thing is, I think it's a great idea to have, you know, all the folks that participate, you know, and all the city committees send something. But it might be helpful if, say, you crafted an email that says. you know, in all the city committees, um, send something, but it might be helpful if, say, you crafted an email that says, look, you know, this is the form, which just says, this is what we'd like you to send, and then send it to everyone, and you know.
Sure.
Because that would facilitate, like you get in your inbox, okay, this is the email this season has me to send.
Like if you were to send it to your, your social circle.
Right, this is what, you know, this will, then please send this to as many people as you can, would be, I think would be really helpful.
Yep.
Right, and we're, we're gonna be making this a little bit more graphically friendly so that it can be maybe even an infographic that gets sent, so that if somebody wants to post it to their, to their social media, that it's.
That's kind of what I was thinking, for neighborhoods, you could just have the city with dates, like, you know, on those quadrants or.
Yeah, this is, this is revealing the amount of time that I have and my proficiency with Microsoft Word.
Perfect for, for now for us, but maybe not the best invite format.
Let me have a break.
Um, Paul?
I was just questioning, are we taking a break or something? I have a call I have to make.
Oh, um, we are not taking a break, but you can go do a call if you need to.
I was gonna wait if you were gonna take a break, but since you're not, I'll just.
I think we're, poor John.
It's, it's too bad the, um, we couldn't figure out a way how to include the schools. You know, I mean, it's such a great venue, especially the elementary schools, parents from, seem to be much more engaged. And there was somehow we could join or have the schools join, I don't, I don't have an idea, but they, uh, it's a, so, content, maybe a contest of some sort. Um, but the kids go, you know, go home with a m- map, a messy map, something, I don't know. But just a thought that this, that the school somehow tapping the schools is, is what a.
So all I can say on that point is I um am in the process of setting up a, a meeting with this, the school district's communications manager, um, I don't think it'll end up being this week, it, it's likely going to be early next week. Um, they are also in the throes of budget season, um, like our city council, so they are difficult to get a hold of at this point. Um, but I will raise that with her and see if that's something that's a possibility. My sort of narrow focus was to advertise these meetings through the school channels, but, but absolutely, I think there's an opportunity for um, being a little more creative and, and trying to get some feedback in a, in a slightly different way through the schools.
Um, Paul?
Are you going to um explain to people what the comprehensive plan is?
Yes.
And uh, why they should be involved?
Yeah, so, so two points on that. First, um, we are in the process of setting up a, a page on our website, on the city website, that we will be um, linking very prominently to the front page of the website, like you don't have to dig through the planning commission or something else pages to get to it. Um, there is a draft, I have a draft um FAQ page that I would be posting to that website. Um, all of this information in a more user-friendly format would be posted to that website and that would be linked in all of our advertising. Um, we are also still intending to do um a short online poll that would also live on that website. So hopefully that would be enough explanation for, if someone saw an advertisement and then went to the website, they would have enough information to think, to quickly understand, like this is something that's important to the city and that it's important for me to participate. And then once people, you know, once people do end up hopefully coming to some of these meetings, that would be something that's part of that initial um opening presentation, just of the five minute or less version of this is the comp plan, this is why we do it, this is why we need your, your input.
I, I would add to that, Paul, that as we're putting together the, the advertising, um, we do want to find the, the fewest words to sound enticing as possible. Um, you know, how, how, and, and we'd welcome any individual feedback that, that folks have, if you have um thoughts, you know, the, 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 the one-sentence version of why is the comprehensive plan important, which I know you all know is, it is the guiding document for the next decade of work that we do in the city. It is, it is, it's the thing that we look to, to say, are we on track with what we're trying to achieve, as this, as a community and all the things that a city can do. Um, I don't know if that, I mean, that, that excites me, but I chose a profession in public policy, so that may not excite everybody.
Yeah.
But that, that's, that's my selling, but if, if others have ideas that you want to share with us.
I will.
To what would, you know, get people excited, you know, other than, you know, there's gonna be a FedEx, no, not FedEx.
For example, where things should or shouldn't be built, where areas should or should not be conserved, so people can inculcate what that really means. Why they can't, that's because of.
So, so what I'll just, I'll say to that is, is I have given sort of a, not verbatim quote version of what Paul just said, but a similar little opening speech when I talk to the city departments. So, so yes, it's, you know, planning and zoning and management, it's community development people, but it was, you know, also the fire department, the police department, the library staff. Um, and it's, that sort of language seemed to click with a lot of people, being like, oh yeah, like, yes, I've heard of a comprehensive plan, I know that we do it, I know that we have one, but like, that sort of basic premise seems, seems to catch people. But again, you know, if we're the planning fishbowl, like there's the municipal services fishbowl, which is a bit bigger, but isn't a, you know, isn't a lot bigger. Um, but it does catch some, some different people, like I had a meeting with Wreckin Parks this morning and, and a similar thing kind of came up.
Well, it's just so easy for people to participate now, I think if you explain to them what it is and give them the information and how to participate. I mean, it's, it's a long winter, what else is there to do?
And that's the intention of, uh, these meetings are, are several, several of them are on Thursdays, but others are on Mondays and Tuesdays and Wednesdays, they're all on different days of the week. Um, there, there would be a hybrid option for any of them. Um, my, as I said, I anticipate most members of the public who participate will be participating virtually from home. Um, so we're trying, it seems like a lot of meetings, eleven is a lot of meetings in effectively a seven-ish week period. Um, alongside all the planning commission meetings as well, but we're trying to give people as many opportunities as they can in a schedule that we can manage um to, to come to these things.
Sounds good.
Yeah, so, let's do it. So, you sure? Who, are we ready to move on to our, our map?
Okay, so, uh, last major item on the agenda tonight. Um, this is really just an introduction because I know that you haven't seen it in advance, but a couple of months ago, we talked about what data inputs would you want to the comprehensive plan? And uh, we've been compiling this, uh, we're beginning to work with a consultant who's gonna do it in a very tidy, neat manner. Um, but we, we've got some initial things that we've seen and we wanted to share with them so that it can help frame your conversation, because, you know, the summer's coming really quickly. So if you'll allow me, I've got a few slides to show what we've sort of found visually so far.
I'm sorry, can I make a quick comment before we dive in? I was, I was a little taken aback by how this item was worded, where it says a discussion about where additional development should be prioritized, which I, I don't, to me, with all the environmental crises and all the discussion we've had here, I was surprised it didn't say additional development and or conservation should be prioritized, I don't know why the focus is continually on development as opposed to other priorities.
That's fair. Okay, thank you for the feedback, that's uh not intentional, it was really just about. Um, I think that in our mind, in our mind, we were thinking about, we know that there's been a lot of interest in focusing the future development that does occur to be within the transit overlay district, and that's sort of our mindset as we were writing that. But I appreciate it, because we're always trying to refine our message and seeing that others are see, reading it differently is important, so thank you.
Yeah, I would just, not to waste anymore, not to spend any more time on this, but when I think of prioritize, identifying areas to prioritize development, the flip side of the same coin is if you're prioritizing development over here, it's pulling it away from somewhere else, but I'm understanding where you're coming from and that was not made express.
Okay, so the fun part, some maps. South Burlington, I thought I'd start with an easy one. Lot of green, big airport, a black line that just seems to keep showing up. Um, keep in mind, everything that I'm showing is very generalized, so you know, look at a br- very broad sense. Everything in the light gray here represents um land that in some form could be considered to be um, conserved, or it's regulated as natural resources, as a habitat block or as natural resource protection or a floodplain, or it's publicly owned and is generally planned to be um, uh, left in a, in a state, uh, a, a standard state. So this is the same basic information that we had that was leading into interim zoning, but updated to include your new regulations. And some, there's a couple of quirks that um you'll see show up in a minute. So this is the state of what we would call today to be broadly regulated or concerned. Add to that, this, the dark gray represents what would generally be considered to be built parts of the city. Now, built, you know, might mean, you know, we, we use the same starting point that we use back um during interim zoning, which is if it's a, a, a property less than four acres that has development on it, we consider it to be built. Um, but this is, this is sort of broadly it, for some reason, only when I zoom in, is the orchard showing as built out. Um, but you know, you're starting to see here's, right here, this is the Hort Farm that's not built, or you're seeing uh parts of Technology Park. But already, when I show these two things, you're seeing much of the city falls into one of these two categories. Sure, so light gray represents land that is broadly speaking, regulated, meaning regulated as a natural resource or conserved in some way. And I use small letter cons- conserve because there's all sorts of gradations of what that means, but broadly speaking. And then dark gray represents land that in a broad sense would be considered to be built upon land, developed land. Doesn't mean that there's not room for lots more development on it, it's just broadly speaking, somebody walking by or driving by would say, oh yeah, that's, that's a developed area. And then the areas that you're seeing showing through in green are neither, they are, would be land that is um, uh, uh, has designations to it, but is u- unbuilt land that is not restricted from development.
Except for the orchards.
So actually, when he zooms in.
So red is the, I, I was just trying to make this, this pop a little bit, red is the things that aren't the other two.
Okay.
So, uh, you know, you'll see here, this is the, over by uh the waterfront, this is the um Feral Estate. Uh, there's this, uh, up here is some UVM land by the uh Aiken um uh, um, Forest Service. Uh, there is some land that belongs to uh UVMs uh up by Swift and Spear. There's the cemetery, uh, that, that the portions cemetery, cemetery that haven't been applied as a cemetery. Um, there's not a huge, huge number of these, you know, in, in the, in the scheme of the city, it's not a huge, huge amount. Um, and that's really what this map is trying to show, is that the, and we'll talk about this in, in a minute, but I'm gonna come back to this one in a few minutes. Um, what this is trying to show, and it's hard to read this, but I took those two colors that we, that we had, the dark gray and the light gray, and then I said, what is the current future land use map say? So you know, you've got that fuzzy map with the colors where it's um, red means um mixed use, um, fairly intense, orange means um largely commercial, um, sorry, largely residential, medium intensity. Yellow means uh largely residential, um, lower intensity development, then green means primarily conservation. So of the remaining land that is either not built or not sort of conserved, what's the current plan say about this? And that's sort of like, th- this is the unbuilt land essentially, um, and what is, what is the current designation?
Mapping the future land use map over the red.
Yes, yep. And then the orange outline here is the transit overlay district, because I know you've been talking. Blue, sorry, blue is um largely commercial, so it's, you know, this is areas like Technology Park and Meadowland Business Park. The, the parcels that have not been built on. And then the orange here, uh, I know that there's been a fair amount of discussion about the transit overlay district and what role it might play, so this is just sort of showing that. Um, just moving on, there's lots more to go. This one was a really hard map that I couldn't quite figure out how to show properly, but the southeast quadrant, as you know, in the, in the, um, what you did with the interim zoning work, as you said, that largely speaking, um, other than in the little village area, anywhere that can be developed has to be a conservation PUD if it's more than four acres. So even in those parcels that do remain, let's say this one here, that's in the light green there. Um, the rules say that seventy percent of that needs to be conserved, and so a question where we're going with this is a question for the future future land use map. The next one is, how would you want to depict that? You know, it's, it's not, I mean, first of all, you have to decide what the policy is, but if you said, we agree with the policy that we came up with last year of saying seventy percent of parcels like that should be conserved, we were thinking maybe it shows sort of a green with a little bit of crosshatching to show that it is largely conserved, but not. Yeah.
Green with crosshatching, something like that? What would be misleading to put like a red, you know, like our old one had like a red dot with green around it or something?
Right, and, and it would be probably misleading based on the current, well, I wouldn't say misleading, it could be improved upon from what is currently shown for that property, and this is just the existing twenty sixteen comprehensive plan, it just shows the whole thing is yellow. And so, you know, the, the now regulation is, we haven't determined in, in advance which seventy percent has to be conserved, but seventy percent does based on the resources on the property. So, you know, maybe it shows like a light green with a little crosshatching, so it's clear that it is largely, but also clear to people that it doesn't mean that the whole property is conserved, you know, to be transparent about your intent. Yes, yeah. Um, and you know, that's one of a, a few, and then this is just, again, this is the future land use map from twenty sixteen with the transit overlay shown over it. And then there's really, these are just maps seven and eight um that we have, so that, um, I know that that's been a source of discussion. As we've been working through our data, this has been the hardest data to um recreate, and it's really just a technological issue that we're gonna have our consultants solve for us, so. It, it, it's a form of uh rare threatened endangered species. It's probably bats there, and um I will let everybody else fill in whatever the high school property has as what you consider to be the most endangered species in, in the middle of the high school, but. Um, but yeah, so going back to, uh, let's see. This map. Nope, well, this map slightly zoomed in. The message that, wha- what this told staff is the realm of unbuilt area for which a policy decision hasn't already been made in a regulatory fashion is relatively limited. Especially if you consider, like I said, in the southeast quadrant part of this, you've set conservation PUDs to say seventy percent needs to be conserved. Um, so as you're thinking about the next future land use map and where to spend your time and energy, you know, we were sort of thinking the first thing we can do is update it to reflect this, reflect what is been conserved or is regulated to be already. You can then, you know, s- review the areas that are, where a color is showing through. And then what we would sort of invite, encourage you to think about is, um, what? How could you use the future land use map to reinforce the other aspects of what you've been talking about? So the future land use map, when I just go to the basic one here, implies but doesn't actually say anything about where the areas that you uh prioritize investment for development. So you know, it implies that it's in the red areas because the red says most intense, but it doesn't actually say we want to focus our efforts of public investment or incentives. public investment or incentives or rules, things like the Form Based Code to be in certain areas. And that's something that we think we're hearing that you wanna do and that we'd like to achieve for you. Similarly, um, it, uh, it sort of characterizes existing neighborhoods, um, versus not existing neighborhoods. But it doesn't do a great job of telling that story about what the future of those places should be. It's sort of, it puts it in a generic sort of lowish density. We talked at the last meeting that maybe intensity and density doesn't really send the message of what you're trying to create. Um, you know, if we replace those very planetary words with something that talked about, you know, thriving, low-scale neighborhoods. You know, we're sending a visual picture of what do we mean that, uh, you know, we're don't, we're not talking about four, five-story, really big buildings. We're talking about um, smaller scale, but that they're integrated neighborhoods that might have a corner store, they have parks, things like that. So how do we use this, the few, the next version of this map to do that? And, and our read is you've done so much heavy lifting over the last decade on the where things shouldn't, shouldn't happen based on the last map that you can, in our view, largely focus your time and effort on these other questions, but what do you all think? That's, that's that's what I see when, when, when I see all this.
Yeah, this is great.
And, you know, we'll, we'll share all this for you, um.
Yeah, focusing on the, on the areas, the transit areas. But to reiterate, there still is, there still are issues in the south qua- southeast quadrant that probably should not be forgotten, uh, of where, what additional development is going to occur. Um, so, you know, I think we really need to you know, focus eighty percent in the density, twenty percent in southeast quadrant or whatever, but, but you really keep an eye on um, you know, careful development when, when it occurs. You know, I ca- I keep thinking of that North Forty is, is, uh, you know, at, at some point, I'm not sure when, but that's a, that's a significant parcel that um, it's just, it's just for those who don't know it, it's just, uh, south of, of Butler Farms, pretty significant, pretty significant.
Yellow one showing up here.
Yeah, yeah, but. Um, so. And then broken record, you know, as we look at this and dance out, you know, we, we really have to make sure that where are these people going to recreate and have their dogs? I mean, the dog park is magnificent, by the way. Yeah, we go there maybe two or three times, if not more, a week. Um, you know, at the Wheeler Park, but it's, um, it's gonna get overrun to use a pun. It's, uh, it's pretty crowded and we're gonna need many more of them. And so, that's just another part of our focus at this level should be put a little circle of green, right, uh, somewhere in Williston Road.
Do you, um, have you thought at all about like a different you, you're trying to get to this, like a different designation of some kind between, like, an existing neighborhood that's already in its state that we wanted for the future versus one of these that's not, I guess I'm just looking at this and it's really clear to be like, okay, grays, there's stuff there already. But like, it should have some kind of color or symbol or something.
Yeah, and this is just, I was just, I was just doing gray, light gray, dark gray to make a very stark. That's not an intended future land use map. I was just trying to make it jump off the page for you. I playing with colors earlier today and I said, what's it was really just to show.
I like.
Yeah. Um, but yeah, I mean, I, I don't wanna overstate this, but the thing that really jumped off the page to me is this is in some ways a little bit of a transitional plan. If you, if we were to think, if we were the city of Winuski or the city of Burlington, their future land use map isn't really about built and unbuilt areas. It's about how do we um, evolve the areas that already are built or unbuilt. That, those decisions have essentially been made about built versus unbuilt for the most part. It's about redevelopment and focus. We're not there entirely, but as compared with, say, twenty-five years ago, a lot of those decisions of future built or not built on a, on a citywide scale. You know, that's eighty-five percent of the land has, some choice has been made about built or unbuilt from policy or development or whatever. And so I'm not saying to ignore that subject, but I think questions like that about like, what does a future land use map in the future mean within areas that decision, that first decision's been made, what's the next question to be had about how do we want those neighborhoods or park areas or natural areas or urban cores to evolve over time? And how would we want us depict that? That, that's, that's the big thing that's coming off the page to me.
Well, just a question about how built was defined again, like if we just kind of maybe scroll down a little bit to, um, just south of I- nine and just
Andrew, would you speak up, please? I can't hear you.
Yeah, sure. I'm sorry, how, right, just south of I- nine and west of the Brook, like all that gray, right, where your mouse is, all that. Why is that all built?
Um, i- it's, it, the, the, it's not perfect by any stretch, but what we used as our first filter on it was if it's more than four acres in size and it is more than ten percent covered in buildings or pavement, we called it built. It's not a perfect uh, it's, it's not perfect, but we felt like we wanted to make sure that a property that
Like a forty acre lot with five acres of buildings would be considered built?
Yes.
Okay.
A- and, and there aren't very many like that, to be honest. Like what we were trying to, I was trying to separate out a property like the, um, the Auclair parcel or the, uh, the hort farm that has, you know, a very small amount
Right.
From, from something like the, uh, the airport would be an example of like, there's a bunch of parts of the airport that are unbuilt. It's probably only forty percent built, but everybody calls that a built area. It's probably the point, the area that you picked out, um, Andrew, is the least good application of this. And, and I'm glad you, I'm glad you picked it out. Also, I put the quarry as built. Um, we can call that built or not built, but I figured it's so much altered that but
And it makes sense.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I, I wasn't planning for this to be the future land use map. It was just to try to give a yeah, that's why I'm trying not to zoom in too much.
Yeah.
Because the more I zoom in, the more you're gonna have questions exactly like that, and they're good.
I think we were also hoping that this was encouraging, that a lot of decisions were made, both about where things have been constructed in the past, but also the amount of conservation work that has been done in the last decade. Um, including the conservation PUDs from IZ, including all of these, um, open space areas and environmentally protect, environmental protection areas, like, um, for there to be a, a reasonably small amount of land that is neither of those two things. Um, shows that a lot of work has been done and it, it, in my mind, takes a little bit of the pressure off of you're not starting from scratch with the future land use map for twenty twenty-four. You're, you're starting with a lot of known entities and a lot of work that's been done. And there's, there's some policies, policy decisions, and there's some tweaks that have to be made, but I'm hoping, and I, I hope policies is the same way, that this, this should be something that's encouraging to you all, that it's, it's not going to be getting on top of you and reinventing the wheel.
Well, could you explain a little bit to me about the, uh, transit overlay districts? I sort of missed that.
Sure, so, um, the transit overlay district is something that was put in place ten or twelve years ago, and its purpose at that time was really to identify areas that are about a quarter mile from where there's regular bus service. So that certain uses like medical facilities or senior housing would only be allowed in those areas, that in the future we don't wanna have, um, a doctor's office that you can't get to by bus. That, that was its purpose. Since that time, it's evolved a little bit and has become, um, used and, you know, others tell me if you disagree, a little bit as a, as a shorthand for, um, built areas that there's agreement that should remain sort of a focus of where we expend our efforts on future development. And so when the city council adopted interim zoning a few years ago, they excluded the transit overlay district. They said that's an area where we're not trying to conserve land per se. When the, um, Climate Action Task Force gave its recommendations about what to do, it recommended that compact development should be prioritized to be within the transit overlay district. Part of why I'm showing it here is to show kind of, uh, how it fits in here. Part of it is also that, um, it serves its, its original purpose really well, but to sort of Andrew's point of when we zoom in, if we're gonna use it in the future for the reasons that we did, that I just talked about, how it's been used, sort of as a discussion of where development should and shouldn't be, we might wanna refine that line a little bit, like, it's literally a quarter mile from bus service, so it cuts right through the middle of, say, the Chamberlain neighborhood. Without necessarily, it's not, it wasn't intended to say on that side of the line, you know, we wanna see multifamily and this side of the line, we don't wanna see multifamily. So I might suggest that as part of this work, you might wanna sort of think about something that is similar in its location, but maybe a little bit more intentional as a planning tool to say, this is our focus area in the city. Because it really just jaggedly cuts through a neighborhood. I think as long as we look at it no closer than this, it's doing a great purpose, but as soon as you sort of go right into a neighborhood, it, uh, oh, then, actually, I said it so that it doesn't turn on if, if you zoom in that closely. So I solved my own problem, but if you were to zoom in really closely, you start to see like, oh, why is it cutting like right diagonally through this street? Does that, does that answer the question, Paul?
Yeah, and I mean, just practically, when you drive down Williston Road or Shelburne Road, there is quite a bit of space available. You know, either that would be a replacement for something old, or a lot of those places are just built on huge pieces of property and, and there's like a little motel in the middle of it or something like that, you know?
Yeah.
I think that's to kind of take Andrew's point. Like even if it's showing up gray, we still wanna make sure we're like making sure we like the designation for the future. Um, Helen, I saw you pop up. Did you have a comment for us?
Yeah, well, I did. I was just, if, if it's okay, um, I was just thinking of the transit overlay districts and wondering if, um, if you could do like a map just for those and start to, um, you know, maybe identify, um, in those areas where the places are for redevelopment. And the potential, uh, I mean, to give us a little more, um, I don't know, understanding or a pictorial view of, of what future development um, might look like or be like, or where it would be. Because certainly within all of that, you still need, as Ted suggested, a dog park perhaps, or some green space or, um, I don't know, sort of like a different section of the city that the map colors could be different and inform us differently.
Yeah.
Does that make sense, Paul?
It makes a lot of sense to me.
That's where we wanna focus development, right? We wanna focus development where there's transportation. Especially if we're looking at affordable housing and low-income housing, right? And there's a lot of space. I've been amazed looking at it.
Yeah, and I think, you know, it, it doesn't totally show up on this map, but, uh, to so, to, to what, uh, Ted and Helen and in the past, um, commissioners like Monica pointed out, if you look at the Shelburne Road corridor, the thing that also jumps off the page to me is boy, there's not much park space in there. You know, there's no, there's very little light gray that would be parks. So there's Red Rocks Park, there's Samansky Park, there's Feral Park, but like in the corridor, this little, uh, light gray splotch right there, that's the cemetery. You know, and, and it's not, it's not much, but that could be a focus area for investing to make even that a little bit of a public place. And how do we, how do we use this to, as a kickoff to get to a stronger plan for how do we get more park space into an area that we're trying to see a lot more development? And not to say that any area is really well-served, but as compared with that, um, you know, we look at an, an, an area like the, um, Chamberlain neighborhood that has uh, DeGraff and it has Garvey and it has JC, and then it has access to city center. I'm not saying it's where it needs to be, but it's closer than, say, the Shelburne Road corridor.
Well, don't forget, the Shelburne Road corridor is very close to the lake and the lake has a large undeveloped parcel. Which eventually could be a park, or some of it could be a park. Eventually. Someday. Someday. I didn't say all of it.
Is that actually an estate? Uh, uh, someone lives there and owns the property?
Yep.
Oh, there is a house on it?
Yes, oh yeah, it's a, it's the year-round residence of, of an individual. Yeah.
Okay, anything else on the ma- maps we wanna go through?
That's it. Um, this is just the beginning, but we wanted to get your initial reactions and you know, use this as a kickoff point and let you know that, um, this is, by the way, just a tiny subset of all the information that we pulled together and we're just trying to like, you know, show it in some way that is useful. So, great, thank you.
Thank you. Um, meeting minutes from December twelve?
We actually don't have them. No.
Okay.
I don't have them in
Then, um, then we are adjourned.
Thank you, everyone.
All very much.
Well, that's, that's the fun part, right?
You know, I love nerves.
I know they're completely unrealistic, but I do too.
You have to understand their limitations.